Tim Allen here, Chair of the Finance Committee. The Council of Van is on, is on the Finance Committee, she's here. And who else have we got? Let's see, Counselor Walsh, is that you?
Yep, I'm on.
Chris Nolley, Steve, what's Steve is that, Steve?
Probably Steve.
Steve Lonergan, is it? Patrick Sullivan.
It is.
Steve Lonergan, okay. Thank you, any other, I see a bunch of people that I know, any other counselors besides Counselor Cliff Bruce and Counselor Walsh? Okay, well, thank you everybody for coming. We got ten items, I don't have any over long. Let's start with the bills of prior year, item number one. You have that, Lindsay, you can hear with us? Anybody, anybody prepared to talk, to talk about the bills of prior year?
Is that Patrick Burns possibly?
Yeah, Kira, are you possibly ready?
Counselor, I can speak on it, this is Patrick Burns.
All right, great.
There's two bills, one is for the Elections Department and one is for our IT Department. The IT bill was one that was split between two departments and unfortunately, the IT portion wasn't paid for, so it's a practice we don't like to do, we like to just have one department pay the bills, so we're gonna correct that going forward.
That'd be great. Thanks, that's only, well, just the year ended three months ago, so. So these aren't really that late, but does that cover it all, Pat, the items that are there?
Yes, the Elections Bill is a small bill that was, came in late to the department, so they didn't have a purchase order in place.
Okay. Great, thank you, Pat, anybody having comments or questions on it? Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to item two. A financial order for the Springfield Library Foundation, a grant that they received, or the libraries have received from the Springfield Library Foundation, it looks like. Is somebody here to talk on this?
Yes, hi, this is Molly Fogarty. This funding is from restricted trusts and endowments for library materials. So we receive about a hundred eighty thousand, we receive a hundred eighty thousand from the Library Foundation to help us meet our twelve percent expenditure requirement from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners and the city funds the remainder of it.
Great, what is that requirement, Molly?
The Mass Board of Library Commissioners requires public libraries to spend twelve percent of their operating budget on library materials. And for us, that's a little bit over seven hundred thousand dollars that we have to spend. So the hundred eighty thousand goes towards that.
That's great.
Is that for new book?
Yes, new books, materials, we buy, it helps for all our online databases, eBooks. We purchase museum passes, we have, this year we're adding tickets to the symphony that people can borrow, so all of that comes out of our materials budget line.
Okay, great, thank you, any questions besides Counselor Walsh's question, any others? All right, seeing none, thank you, Molly, for that explanation. Let's move on to item three, fiscal year twenty-four Shine Grant. No match required, eighty thousand plus. Is anybody here to talk on that?
Yes, I'm here, it's Sandy Federico.
Right.
These are earmarked funds to supplement the regular contract and the funds are to be used for things that the regular contract doesn't provide for us.
Okay. And how much money do we get for Shine, you know, over the course of the year? Sandy, you know, roughly, is this it?
We're waiting for probably another eighty thousand, seventy, seventy-eighty thousand more for the regular contract.
So between that one you're waiting for and this one, that's the?
That's the total.
That's the total?
These, yes.
Okay. Then, is any questions from anyone else regarding the Shine Grant? I haven't seen any, thank you very much, Sandy. Okay, item four, fiscal year twenty-four DPW Recycling Dividends, it sounds like we're getting money for recycling, is that happening again? Is that Chris?
As always, Tim, as always. This is our annual grant from the DEP for the various recycling programs that we have in the city, we receive points for all the things that we do in the city. This year, the grant is seventy-one thousand five hundred and we use a majority of that grant for purchasing of barrels, expanding our recycling program to different areas as well as our household hazardous waste days.
Great, and if we did more recycling stuff, would this grant potentially get bigger?
Not necessarily, because what we have is, they have a listing of what you can get points for and since we do curbside pickup, other communities have, would get, would get points for having a transfer station or if we were doing reuse centers, things like that, that other communities do that don't have curbside. So we get two points for curbside where other communities get it for having, having, excuse me, transfer stations. So basically, every, we're probably at about the max that we can get and we get three points for having curbside where other communities going to get one or two for having transfer stations. And we also get points for having a bulk, bulk program as well.
Great. All right, thanks for the info, Chris, anybody have a question for Chris?
I do.
Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, so Chris, I'm wondering, are there gonna be any changes to the recycling program? I know there was always talk of doing it once a week. Can we look forward to any changes?
At this point, we haven't decided to change that, if our volume continues to go up, we may have to. However, at this point, volume is pretty, actually, it's going down, both trash and recycling are going down from when it peaked during COVID. So right now, we are still good at every two weeks, but we monitor that to see if we need to go any farther, right now, we don't have a plan to change it.
So are there, there are any pilot programs? Anything else you're working on?
From a waste standpoint, actually, what we're really spending a lot of time now is just monitoring the volumes. Because we're having to do a lot of trans, you know, we're transporting our material now, the incinerator is, is gone, is being torn down right now, so if you drive by there, you'll see that being torn down in Agawam. But at this point, no changes to the program that we are looking for right now, we are fully automated with all of our equipment at this point, so we're in dire, we're waiting for a number of pieces, I think five pieces of equipment we've been waiting for for replacements, so our fleet's getting, getting old, so we're waiting for vehicles, they take about fourteen months. So we ordered a bunch last year, we're ordered some this year as well.
Oh, thank you, thanks for the update.
Chris, something you just said I was gonna ask you, oh, the incinerator being torn down and the Counselor Goobon has a question here in a second as well.
Yep.
Is, could you just explain that, is there a new incinerator or is it just, we're not using that incineration anymore?
No, the, the company that we initially had, Covanta, who was running the incinerator and about four and a half years ago, it was transferred to a company called Community Eco Power. Community Eco Power, about two and a half years ago, filed for bankruptcy. The property was taken over by FNG, who was a unit of USA Hauling. So they renegotiated our contract. We went from eighty something dollars a ton up to a hundred. However, when we did the agreement, when Community Eco Power took over from Covanta, any increase in fee up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year has to be covered by Covanta. So we're paying the same, the exact same amount that we would be as if there weren't incinerator where virtually every other community in Western Mass is probably paying, I'm gonna say, depending upon the size of the community, probably paying ten to twenty dollars more a ton to get rid of their waste and that deal is in place until our existing landfill in Agawam is fully closed plus one year. So we have another twelve, fourteen, fifteen years where we would be paying that anyway, so we negotiated a very, very good deal when this was transferred over to Community Eco Power, so our, our waste goes to a number of different places and I guess, honest, I don't care. As long as our rate is what it needs to be, so we're basically paying the rate, we are paying the rate that we would be paying anyways. And we get a check every quarter from Covanta.
Great, great, okay, Counselor Govan?
Hi, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Chris, I know, I know we've mentioned this in the past and I don't know that it's gonna be able to be done now, but the availability to have composting as one of the services, is that something that you're thinking about?
We do that now.
But for the residents?
Excuse me?
For the residents?
Yeah, we put out compost material every year, we put it out at.
No, I'm talking about picking up the composting from, I mean, not the composting, but you know, the materials from the residents. So having kind of like, like you pick up the recycling?
Right, well, we pick up all the yard waste and the yard waste gets turned into the compost.
I know.
So any of that material, any of that material, if residents have it and it's bagged, we'll pick it up.
Okay, so you're saying?
Yeah, we'll pick it up.
Like the vegetable scraps and things like that?
Yeah, that's, the, the organics is something that we've been trying to talk to people about and that's gonna require a modification of our, of our landfill permit and what it is, is that we need to get to a certain volume to be able to make that work and right now, A, we don't have the space for it and B, we don't have the volume. So I get entities who come in all the time who wanna run that program, but we can't get to the volume citywide. And you know, what I've told these companies, well, if you wanna come in and try and collect it, you know, then basically for all of us old people in the city who remember when we used to pick up the garbage. I good, see Kathy, I good to see you nodding, I know, I know, I know. That was basically kind of what that program was, but right now, that program, it, it can't be made profitable by anybody, so everybody's kind of looking for it because there are programs out there for organics to energy, organics to whatever that these companies want to do, but we don't have the volume in the city to be able to handle that.
Yeah, okay, so maybe that might be something that we could do some sort of an educational thing for the residents to maybe grow that, because you know, that'd be a great, like you said, alternative energies, reusing, you know, waste, so, thank you, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Oh, we have Counselor Fenton here.
Yeah, thank you.
And he's not that old, he's not that old.
He doesn't remember that.
In the, in the ground. I remember him, Kathy.
Smelled great.
All right, thanks Counselor Govan, welcome Counselor Fenton from Ward Two attending the meeting. Next one is item five, fiscal year twenty-four, back to the libraries, library services and technology grant. Molly, you still here?
Yes, I'm here, yes, this is a federal grant, it's a competitive grant round and it will be used at the Mason Square branch to do programming related to workforce development.
Good, that was good. Staffed by your staff?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, thanks, anybody got a question on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to item six, I know why some people are here now. When this started, the East Forest Park Library, six or seven years ago, whenever that was. Okay, item, item six, is that you, Molly, or?
Yes. There are actually two orders for the East Springfield branch. So basically, the Mass Board of Library Commissioners is a state agency that manages library construction grants for public libraries in Massachusetts. And the grants are issued pretty much every, between five and seven years. So this, the last time we applied, of course, was for in two thousand sixteen for the East Forest Park branch and when we were notified last, probably last spring that there would be a new grant round, we submitted a letter of intent to apply for the grant, which was required to be eligible to apply and we submitted that in April of two thousand twenty-three with a letter of support from Mayor Sarno and from Counselor Fenton and from the East Neighborhood, East Springfield Neighborhood Council. And so the grant is due in May of two thousand twenty-four and it's a planning and design grant, the awards will be announced in September of two thousand twenty-four. And if we are, it is a competitive grant, if we do receive the grant, we will start a planning and design phase starting in probably October or November of two thousand twenty-four and we have about fifteen months to complete that phase. Once that's completed and there are approved design documents and we don't have to apply for a construction grant, which is a much better process than we have for East Forest Park. At that point, obviously, we'd be coming back to City Council for approval for the funding bond issue for the, for the new library for East Springfield. And construction documents would be in spring, spring of two thousand twenty-five. An estimated date for groundbreaking, looking maybe fall of two thousand twenty-five and estimated completion probably spring of two thousand twenty-seven. So it is a long process, we went through this for East Forest Park and it does take, you know, five to seven years, about five years to get it done. The East Springfield branch as all of you, I don't know if you, and all of you have been there, but it's on twenty-one Osborne Terrace. It was built in nineteen thirty-one and opened to the public in nineteen thirty-two. It has been well maintained by the city. We have an accessible bathroom on the main level that was put in about five years ago and there has been a roof replaced about five years ago. But of all the nine library locations, it's the smallest building and the only one that hasn't had significant building renovations and upgrades since it was built and does not meet ADA code. So what we're looking is to apply for a planning design grant to evaluate the building, look at a renovation and addition and our, the library, it's very popular in Spring, in East Springfield. It's a very busy library, it has very limited space, the whole building is about thirty-one hundred square feet on two levels and the public space is about twenty-three hundred square feet. The library has lots of programs, we add programs, services and we don't have an accessible entrance at this time. And additional space would focus on a whole new ra, wide range of expanded programming and service, services for all ages. I know the East Springfield Neighborhood Council starting in January of two thousand nineteen had lots of meetings with neighborhood residents and residents overwhelmingly expressed the need for more space. Areas of concern included designated spaces for children, teens and adults and additional space for more public computers, collections, quiet study rooms, programming space and a community room. The current building just doesn't meet that. Pretty much the collections and the public service areas fully utilize all the existing space and there's no room for programming, when the staff do programming, they have to move furniture around and it really doesn't meet the needs of the twenty-first century library, so this is a great opportunity to finally do something for East Springfield branch. And I'm sure if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Some people here, anybody wanna talk on this? This is the East Springfield here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just wanna thank Molly for working so hard on this, this is, this is a project that the neighborhood's been working on for over ten years, the entire time that I've been a member of the City Council and we're really thrilled to have this opportunity to apply this funding cycle. It doesn't come up all the time, we've been waiting years for this funding cycle to come forward and we're hopeful, fingers crossed, that we'll get the grant and be able to do some long overdue improvements to this branch that's really important to the neighborhood.
You have the space, the acreage kind of thing?
Well, one, one of the aspects of the grant is that, and you might recall this from dealing with the East Forest Park one, is that you have to identify one alternative site location, so through this process, we would have to do the same thing that was done in East Forest Park and present at least another possibility, but the neighborhood's strong preference to keep the building where it is. There is some adjacent land that would allow for expansion. Certainly nothing to the size and scale that we saw on Surrey Road, but still something that could much more appropriately meet the needs of the neighborhood than, than what's there today. And, and another really interesting thing about this library and my opinion and observation is it's really the only library left in the system that's on a strictly residential street. There's a lot of other libraries that are on main thoroughfares or that have adjacent parking, this is, this is on Osborne Terrace, I mean, this is, this is a residential street. You know, Kathy leaves one street over, Kara's here from the board, she lives a few houses down on Osborne Terrace and it's just, it's a part and a fixture of the neighborhood and we wanna keep it for future generations.
Nice. Did you guys wanna say that, Kathy or Kara?
We're just very excited to be here tonight to talk about this because as Counselor Fenton did say, that we've been working on this for lots and lots of years and, and we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel, which is breathing new life into, into the whole community, so thank you.
Good, that's great. Excellent, anyone else that would like to comment on this? Item six. I haven't seen anybody, it sounds great. Few people spoke on it, sounds great, the library is, brings a lot to a community. Okay, thank you for coming. Item seven, a donation, an order with a donation to the police canine unit. Somebody got that one?
Thank you, Counselor. This is a donation from Jan and Bernadette Pipel for the Springfield Police Department's K-9 unit. It's a donation of ten thousand dollars. The previous owners of, and I hope I'm saying this right, Piple's Camera Center. It is meant to support the SPD's K-9 unit and there was a mass live article published on October eighth highlighting the donation.
Very nice.
I think it's Pepper.
What is it?
Pepper.
Pepper, okay, sorry, Pepper. Gonna make a note.
Great, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's okay. So I would just like to acknowledge and thank Jan and Bernadette for making this donation, they're my next door neighbors, they're residents of Atwater Terrace, this is a really generous donation and pets are near and dear to their heart, so was thrilled that they made this generous contribution to the K-9 unit. They also made a similarly generous donation last year to the TJO Animal Hospital that we accepted that was used to add a X-ray room for, for, for canines and want to thank them for being great neighbors and very generous supporters of the city.
Excellent, great, thank you, Mike, for that comment. Okay. Item eight, moving up the ranks here a little bit in terms of the amount, number of dollars, so supplemental budget increase in state aid, two point seven million, Lindsay, you got that one or Pat?
I'll handle this one, Counselor, this is an increase that we received in charter tuition, state aid, this was the amount in the final budget, the final budget was twenty-four million, five hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars. So this is a increase of the school department budget, we are mandated by chapter seventy to appropriate this amount in the school budget to remain in compliance with net school spending, the school business office has asked us to put this in a reserve for contingency account within their budget and from there, the school committee will be transferring the money out into various line items.
By doing that, that meets the net school spending requirement, Pat?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Anybody on this one? Any other comments? Thank you, Pat. Supplemental budget, our item nine, increase in state aid, seven hundred and one thousand. Pat, is that you again?
Yes, Counselor, this is an increase in the unrestricted general government aid that was passed in the final budget. The final amount was forty-five million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, it's represented a increase of seven hundred and one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars. That was the amount that we had passed originally based on the information we had when the budget was adopted. We're proposing that this amount be used for the Park Forestry Division, five hundred thousand and for the Law Department Professional Services, two hundred and one thousand, six fifty-six. I believe Pat Sullivan and Attorney Breck are here and they can answer any specific questions on how the appropriation's gonna be utilized.
Oh, that'd be great. Pat, you wanna start that off?
Sure, so thank you for putting this forward tonight. We've had excessive rains past year and it has caused excessive growth and also excessive decay on our urban trees. So we have over fifteen hundred trim requests and probably over two hundred tree removals requested by city residents, so we wanna honor those requests by our residents and get caught up in this work and this money would allow us to do that. And it's a broad section right across the entire city.
That's good, so would we, you know, sub out some of the work, is that the idea?
It would, yeah, so then that's what, what happened, we have contracts already established to do this type of work and we would use that, that contract to perform this work and relieve our forestry crews to do the day-to-day routine. So it'll go a long way in getting us caught up and especially with the winter season coming forward, it's a good time to get the city buttoned up before we start with some winter storms or ice storms, which would just further complicate if we don't address these issues this fall.
Great, excellent. While you're here, Pat, how did, I went to part of the celebration this weekend, how did it go the three days?
It, it was great, we had over five hundred visitors on Thursday night. We have over six hundred seniors come over on Friday for the, for the pre-lunch in Bachi, in and out of Forest Park. We had over three hundred come for the carriage house tours. I drove through the park and it was just great to see so many people at the zoo at the tent for the magic show, had great visitations at the new Bow Relief Honoring Theater guys, so we had over a thousand people come in, just in and out that, that day on Saturday. So it was, I think, really great and just the residents were very, very thankful, everywhere the Barney Carriage House are to have this day with their family and you could tell a lot of them probably wouldn't go to the zoo because there's normally a fee, so we supplemented the zoo that day, so families could get into the zoo and the children were for free, so we're looking at making this probably just a yearly open house type of event for the residents of Springfield, even maybe try to do it twice a year.
Nice, nice, well, congrats, it would look like, it was a great event, what I, what I intended, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Add to that.
Counselor Walsh was at a few of the events, yep.
Yeah, and, and they were so well received and you were so lucky, you had great weather, which brought out a lot of people, I was really shocked at how many people showed up for the seniors lunch.
Yeah.
And, and you had the.
The windowsill really works for the weather.
Yep, yeah, so congratulations on being a hundred and forty years old.
Thanks, Counselor Walsh, thanks, Pat. Attorney Breck, are you wanting to talk on the other part of this?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Allen. The two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is the second portion of the supplemental budget, the increase in state aid. We are, the, I, we're very grateful. Um, we are, the, I, we're very grateful to the city for considering, um, providing this funding for us. We find ourselves in a bit of a, I don't wanna say crisis, but it is sort of a crisis because we have so many very significant and large, uh, litigation matters that are coming up for trial and we do not have the staff, um, available in our litigation division to cover all these very, very significant cases. And so we've had to go out, um, and put law firms under contract to help us out representing the city in various litigation matters. Approximately, we have twelve separate contracts now with outside counsel for various lawsuits, et cetera. One law firm in particular, just in the past three months, um, we're billing at seventy-six thousand dollars. So the money, we're just bleeding money and we need this in, in, um, you know, infiltration of money. We, um, certainly hope the council would agree to assist us in carrying out our duties in this, in this manner. So for them, so it's a lot, not only the law firms that are doing the work, representing us in court, preparing for trial, but also we have expert witnesses. We have deposition transcripts that we have to pay for, sheriff's fees. You name it, there's, it's just very, very expensive. Uh, and we would, we really need the money and we appreciate any support from the council. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Great, thank you, Attorney Breck. Uh, anybody have a question for, for her?
Counselor Allen, can I say something? That's Pat Sullivan speaking.
Of course, all right.
Yeah, so we, we just several, we just used the law departments outside counsel on a similar issue, uh, Kenneth Park. And I just wanna let the counselors know it was very successful. And that even though we might have spent sixty thousand on that law firm, it brought back in over eight hundred thousand dollars in, uh, repairs to that park that should have been part of that contract. So even though the law department has spent sixty thousand, we saw eight hundred thousand in, um, reconciliation and improvements made that were part of the contract. So I just wanna echo Kathy and, uh, that firm did an excellent job. So even though they're spending money in that case, it, um, it brought back eight hundred thousand dollars in repair. So two hundred thousand, you're still six hundred thousand dollars ahead in my book. So Kathy, thank you for your good work on that, that one case.
Well, thank you, Pat. We were very lucky to have a very skilled and professional, uh, construction law firm representing us on two very important park department projects. Um, and luckily, we were able to, um, settle both matters without litigation being filed. And I wanna thank Pat for, for his, um, his department's tireless work on the both projects.
That's great. Uh, great, good to hear. Uh, people working together like that, that's great. Uh, thank you. Um, anybody else on this item?
Uh, yes, yeah, I, um, Kathy, just, it, this is for outside firms. Are you gonna try to bring more staff into the law department with this?
We've been trying, Counselor Walsh, for many, many years to recruit litigation attorneys into the law department without much success. Um, because these are, these are people that are in the top, the top of their field. They're, um, very, very, um, experienced in going to federal court, um, defending civil rights lawsuits. Um, they're the, they're the best, just about the best in their field. And they're doing a fantastic job representing us, but it is expensive. Um, you know, some of the firms are local, some are, many of the attorneys are local, but some are not. Some are Boston law firms, but they specialize in defending cities and towns against these kinds of lawsuits. Um, so, I, you know, we, if we had the internal capacity, we would be doing that, but we just don't. Unfortunately, we, we continue to, um, seek to fill positions, but we just haven't been that successful. Um, and to get the really experienced trial lawyers, they tend to, to, uh, be in, uh, to, in private practice where they can make a lot more money than, you know, working for the government. So, uh, but they're doing a great job representing us, but we just need to be able to pay the bills.
Thank you.
Well, we'll help you do that and say.
Thank you.
Action. Um, yeah, anyway, um, thanks on item nine. We're on the last item or, uh, item ten. The appropriation order for East Springfield Branch Library Construction Project. Going along with what we said before on it, um, this, can someone speak to this?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, in order to, um, submit a successful application, we need both orders. The order that we just discussed, which was to give the library department permission to apply for the grant and expend the grant funds if awarded. And then the second is an appropriation order of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, that would be used in fiscal twenty-five, uh, if we received the grant. And the funding would come from the capital project fund.
Okay. Is this the equivalent of the twenty-nine thousand?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's gone up quite a bit since two thousand and fourteen, yes.
Uh, I, I remember that. I remember the amount of that one, twenty-nine thousand. Get started. Um, anyway, um, thank you, Molly. Anybody wanna speak to it? Pat, Bernie, you all set with it and stuff? And, and Lindsay?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody else got business before, before us tonight? Not seeing anything. There's two members of the Finance Committee here, Counselor Govan and myself. Um, we seem to go through these items pretty well without any controversy. Counselor Govan, would you like to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'd make a motion that we, um, I guess, bring these to our council meeting and close the meeting.
Okay.
There's two motions.
To approve them?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, Counselor Govan made a motion to approve these items, bring them to the council meeting. I second that, so they, they are approved and we'll go to the, the seven o'clock meeting in that status. Um, thanks, everybody, for coming.